You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily. All county offices will be closed on Tuesday, June 19th in observance of the Juneteenth holiday. All county offices will reopen on Wednesday, June 20th, 2018. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x, dot com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barril started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Good morning. Today is Monday, June 11th, 2018. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I am the United States of America, against the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 3A through 3J. The County Attorney's Office has requested that we pull item 3I for discussion. Are there any other items that members of the Court or the public would like to discuss individually?
Commissioners, any items you'd like pulled from the Consent Agenda, or any members of the public that would like any items pulled? Okay, here you none to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Mr. Nav, I don't know that we have anybody here to speak on item I, but if we do, we'll go ahead and take that.
We do have Ms. Lidle from the County Attorney's Office.
Okay. Perfect. We can go ahead and take that item first after we finish a public comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Item 4A, Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Rick Cabrera for his years of commitment and service to our community in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, fellow commissioners and county judge. I have the honor of reading this resolution. I wanted to do this for Rick. I met him, one of the first probably persons I met when I came to El Paso. I used to be a journalist as well. I worked for Channel 26 and met him right off the bat and we became friends and really became someone who I looked up to in the journalistic world. And, you know, I, so I wanted to honor him. I think that he, you know, he's done a lot for this community. He's, he worked for KBIA for almost 20 years, I believe, and, you know, he's decided to move on and, which is not an easy decision to make, you know. I know that he loved working in TV, as I did, and it wasn't an easy job for, easy job for me to make the switch from working, working in TV and to working for Senator Rodriguez. But, so I definitely understand, you know, how difficult it may be. You know, you're not going to be in the limelight anymore, man. You're not going to be able, nobody's going to want to listen to your jokes anymore. I mean, you're pretty much going to be a nobody, but, you know, that's your, that's your, that's your choice. So, you want to do it. But, I, you know, he's done a great, done, done some great work at KBIA, you know, has been a great representative and voice for, for El Paso over the last, you know, 19 years. Wonderful father, has, has two beautiful kids, who my child adore, you know, and are really good friends as well. And, you know, we wish him the best in his future endeavors. He's going to be working for Hub International, selling insurance, and we hope that he is successful doing that. So, just going to go ahead and read this for you. If you want to come up to the podium as I, as I read it, and then if you want to say a few words, I guess we can let you say a few words. Whereas Rick Cabrera has been one of the leading voices in El Paso County delivering our community's most important news on KBIA, ABC 7 Television News. And whereas Mr. Cabrera, who made El Paso his home in 1999, when he began his career in TV journalism as a weekend sports anchor, rose through the ranks, becoming the sports director after nine months on the job. And whereas in 2005, Mr. Cabrera co-anchored ABC 7 at four, and a year later, he began to co-anchor Good Morning El Paso. And whereas Mr. Cabrera became the main anchor at ABC 7 in 2008, working until present alongside Estela Casas during, during newscasts while also working diligently to help develop new and young producers. And whereas through his years of broadcasting service, as he won two Emmy Awards and has been voted Best of El Paso as both news and sports anchor. And whereas Mr. Cabrera remains proud of the service that he has contributed to his community and schools in El Paso, having emceed dozens of fundraisers for charitable organizations, served as pronouncer for multiple spelling bees, and has read to hundreds of El Paso youth through Reed across America. And whereas he serves proudly on the boards of Make-A-Wish and March of Dimes, which together have raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for local infants and children. And whereas after more than two decades reporting and announcing local and area news, Rick Cabrera has decided to leave our television screens to pursue new endeavors and spend more quality time with his beautiful children, Andrew and Madden. And now, therefore be it resolved by the Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that Rick Cabrera be recognized for his years of commitment to our community as a voice of true independent news and information gathering and sharing, his dedication to serving honorable community organizations, and his professionalism to make his own path as one of El Paso's greatest voices. Sign this 11th day of June 2018 by the Honorable County Commissioners' Court.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Going to come up to the podium there and, I don't know if you have anything you want to say, any last words?
I just want to know where the teleprompter is. Thank you all very much. This was a wonderful surprise when Commissioner Stout told me about this. Obviously, I've enjoyed my time being part of Channel 7 and ABC 7 and making this my home. So, to be honored like this is a real honor, and I have so much respect for the job of the County Commissioners' Court. So, to be honored in this way is really something very special. So, I thank all of you, and I'm glad it was all ayes. That's a relief. I was a little worried coming in, so. But thank you all very much. And again, thank you, Commissioner Stout. Appreciate, value your friendship, of course. And I'm getting a little emotional here, but it's been a wonderful ride. And El Paso's my home, and I plan to make it my home for a long time. So, thank you all again. It's a real honor and a privilege to be recognized by you. And again, I did this job because I loved it and I had a passion for it. And it's going to be sad to say goodbye, but at the same time, onward and upward, and life is about change, and I'm excited about the changes that are coming. So, thank you all very much.
Commissioner Leon. Before you go away, what a voice, Rick. You ought to go work for the Ice Capes or something. But I've got to say...
Well, I'm available for hire. So, if any of you know anyone that's looking for commercial voiceover work, please contact my agent, Commissioner David Stout.
But I've got to say, in the many years that you've been involved in, in reporting the news, what a difference you've made because when I would hear it, you wouldn't put any kind of slant on it. You would let the listener make up their own mind whether they're going to go this way or that way. So, I always, I always appreciate it, especially because I was in the news sometime, and you, you reported the news, not what your opinion was or somebody else's opinion. So, thank you very much for all those years. We'll never forget.
That's something I strive for, so I appreciate hearing that. Thank you, Commissioner Leon.
And I'd like to echo Commissioner Leon's sentiment in that, sitting here and listening to your voice, I thought I was at home watching the news or listening to it while I was cleaning or cooking. And so, it'll be sad to not have that be a constant now moving forward. But thank you for all that you did. I'm sure it was not an easy task to be in front of the public eye all the time, as the Commissioners' Court is well aware what that is like. And oftentimes, you had to get up and correct the record on some of the stories, and you did that so graciously. And, and you did that. And so, that says a lot about the station and about your work. So, so thank you and congratulations and best of luck.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
A round of applause, please.
Item 4B, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the 2018 Special Forces Association International Conference and Convention, taking place on June 12th, 2018 through June 17th, 2018 in El Paso County, Texas.
It is my deep honor to read this resolution into the record today, and we have three very special guests with us to accept. And so, if you'd please, I'm going to read the resolution into the record, and then we'd ask that you'd come up and say a few words and introduce yourself. Whereas the El Paso Chapter 9 of the Special Forces Association will host the 2018 Special Forces Association International Conference and Convention at the Wyndham El Paso Airport Hotel in El Paso, Texas. And whereas the mission of the Special Forces Association is to serve as the voice for the Special Forces community, perpetuates traditions and brotherhood, advances the public image of the Special Forces, as well as promotes the general welfare of the Special Forces community. And whereas, the 2018 Special Forces Association Convention will assemble over 1,000 of its 9,500 members in El Paso and introduce, introduce the Green Berets to our beautiful corner of West Texas. And whereas, the Special Forces Association will honor Mexican-American Green Berets and pay tribute to the patriotism and love for the United States that entice them, their parents, and grandparents to make America their home. And whereas, the convention will provide the 85 chapter members and their families the opportunity to gather for the purpose of friendship and camaraderie. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court do hereby recognize and welcome the Special Forces Association to the Sun City for the 2018 Special Forces Association International Conference and Convention on June 12th through the 17th, 2018 in El Paso County, Texas. Thank you for your service. Sign this 11th day of June 2018 by the honorable members of the Commissioners' Court.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We invite you to come up and say a few words, Mr. Canoff. Thank you for being here, and as well as the other guests.
Talk me into it.
Good morning.
I don't have any prepared words. First of all, let me tell you, thank you very much for this honor. It's indeed, this has been a convention that's two and a half years in the making, and I want to tell you that I am flanked by two true American heroes. All anybody has to do is look at the cabbage and lettuce on the chest of these guys and, and just realize that they don't give out those things, you know, in Cracker Jack boxes. So, I'm truly, this is, let me introduce Joe Lopez to my left, and Phil Slaniger to my right. And let me, I don't have a prepared statement, and that's true, but what I do have is the, is the chairman's message that we are, that is on the first page of the program of our convention schedule book. Chapter 9 welcomes you all to our corner of West Texas and Old Mexico. Many of you have trained here. Some of you had their tickets punched here, and pretty much all of you have passed through from time to time. We're glad you're back. Our, our bend in the Rio Grande has been home to native civilizations dating back over 4,000 years, and was once the site of a Spanish Army Presidio. One of our activities this week is a tour of that outpost chapel, San Luisario, and two historic Spanish missions. Similar missions in other parts of Texas and California have been preserved as museums, not ours. Mass is still held on Sunday, just as it has been in the case of the Isleta Mission since 1682. A Franciscan priest commands the pulpit, just as one of his brothers did some 336 years ago. Isleta is the oldest mission in Texas. El Paso sits on the high ground, about 3,800 feet above sea level at the base of Mount Franklin, the southernmost peak of the Rockies. Mexico can be seen to the south and the west from virtually every vantage point in El Paso County. Many born to the south have succumbed to the lure of Texas and the opportunities available here in the United States of America. For decades, immigrant men from Mexico have sought to earn American citizenship by serving in the military. Many of them and their sons did so by volunteering for the army. It was inevitable that some of these men, their sons and grandsons, became members of the Special Forces. These are the men we honor this week. We'll lift our commemorative wine glasses on Saturday night and salute the Mexican-American Green Berets among us, and toast to those who blaze their path.
Thank you very much for being here, for your service to our community, to our country, and for selecting El Paso as your meeting point over the weekend. We, we love our military community here in El Paso. I hope that that's very evident. And so, we're so happy that you will be here celebrating all of your fantastic work and efforts and patriotism here in El Paso.
We have a little gift for each one of you. Our Special Forces Challenge Board for this. Come on, historical commission.
Thank you. If we could please have a round of applause for these wonderful... If we could please have a round of applause for these wonderful gentlemen.
Can we take a picture?
Absolutely.
Would you do the honors? We'll be out of here in 45 seconds. He probably died. Ending it up a little bit.
Item number 4C, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the month of June 2018 as Pride Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioners, it is again my honor to read this resolution into the record. I had the amazing pleasure and honor to serve as one of the grand marshals for this year's Pride Parade. You may have seen the picture in the El Paso Times, which is again just an honor. And every year there is a group of Al Passoans by way of a special group that puts this Pride Month on for El Paso. And not just for the month of June, but they do work year round. And so I really wanted today to be able to celebrate the work that they and so many others put into for El Paso. Whereas on June 28, 1969, New York City Police raided and arrested patrons of the Stonewall Inn in New York City, sparking major demonstrations by the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community and their supporters. And whereas the Stonewall raid and subsequent riots were a turning point in the history of the LGBTQ community and inspired the first Pride events the following year on June 28, 1970, when demonstrations and parades were first held in New York City, Chicago, and Los Angeles. Since then, the LGBTQ community has made significant strides. And whereas people from all over the world joined together in the month of June to observe Pride Month, celebrating love, diversity, self-pride, and the dynamic LGBTQ community. And whereas the El Paso Sun City Pride is our region's largest recognized LGBTQ organization and has worked tirelessly since 2007 to increase awareness and visibility in the El Paso community. And whereas during the month of June and year round, El Paso Sun City Pride hosts Pride Fests, which includes a festival, scholarship presentations for local students, a parade, a youth dance, and family-friendly events all geared towards celebrating all that the LGBTQ community has accomplished. And whereas El Paso has always been at the forefront of the civil and human rights movement and should continue to be a beacon of hope in ensuring that equal treatment of all people. And whereas El Paso stands united as we continue to break down barriers demanding equality and spreading love for one another regardless of race, gender, or sexual orientation and gender identity. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court do hereby recognize the month of June 2018 as Pride Month. Signed this 11th day of June 2018 by the Honorable Members of the Commissioners Court.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Commissioners, we have with us today President of the El Paso Sun City Pride, Edward Gallardo, the Vice President Raul Martinez, and Dove Kofler, who has been involved with Sun City Pride for quite some time. So thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this morning.
Good morning. Thank you all for having us here this morning. It's definitely an honor and a privilege to be here. We've worked tirelessly, as you have said as well. We're a community organization, completely volunteer. We do a lot for our community in regards to encompassing inclusivity instead of exclusivity. Want to make sure that we celebrate each other and that everyone can come together as a community. I'm actually really overwhelmed today and I'm so sorry. I'm a little bit at a loss for words. But anyhow, we just celebrated Pride Week. But it's not just about Pride Week or Pride Month as far as June is concerned. It's 365 days a year, about celebrating who you truly are. And we just want to say thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank you for recognizing us, recognizing our work in the community, and for everything that we do to try to bring everyone together. So thank you all.
Thank you for being here. Anybody else want to say any?
I'm the John Boehner of the group. I always cry. I just want to say thank you for coming from a former county employee for the strides that the county has made to offer same-sex benefits to their employees and allowing you as a county to compete with other counties in the world, to bring good employees to the city. Ruben, thank you for everything that you did this week with us. It's always a pleasure to come back to my first employer and to stand here and say that I'm a proud El Pasoan. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this. It really means a lot to us. I'm the historian for the El Paso Sun City Pride. I've been a historian for over six years and I've been able to document the growth of the organization. And it really has come a long way from this to this, and we're going higher. So thank you so much for this honor. We really do appreciate it.
Mr. Gallardo, you are the outgoing president and I know that you've been in that role for some time now. So congratulations for all that you've done to elevate the organization.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
A round of applause, please.
Never keep gets you wrong.
Item number five, public comment.
Mr. Navas, we have three individuals signed up for public comment. I'm going to ask our IT department to come up first so they can announce the, some exciting news for El Paso County.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Rick Rubio. I'm an ITD project manager. And I was the project manager over the new county website implementation project. As you all know, we launched the new website this weekend and it is live and ready to go this morning. Whenever we look at projects and analyze them, we always have decisions to make as to whether we're going to outsource or develop things in-house or we make several different decisions. And one of the things that our research showed us was that there were other jurisdictions who outsourced at the cost of somewhere in the high six, low seven figures, implementing or using implementation staffs much larger than what we had. But in analyzing our resources in-house, we were very confident that we could do this in a timeframe that was comparable to other jurisdictions and the quality would be there. And over a period of close to two years, this was accomplished. And like I said, it launched this weekend, as you all know. It couldn't have happened without cooperation from and collaboration between departments in the county and of course you all in the Commissioners Court and the administrative side of the county. It also required a great amount of collaboration, not just from our web team, but between the different divisions in ITD. We had to make sure that the infrastructure was there. We had to make sure that we had support there. The software team, make sure the applications that were embedded in the website were there. And but most importantly, we had to have a top-notch web team that would deliver the product that we were envisioning. And we believe we did that. We have Oscar Vickers here, who has been with the county for a number of years and excellent web developer. We have Alex Rivas, who is also a top-notch web developer. And I might add, every month serves to frustrate the rest of us in ITD somewhat because he consistently turns in the highest customer service marks for not just his division, but the entire department. So I'd like to go ahead and introduce them and have them tell you a little bit about the website. But we thank you for all, for your support in launching this very, very important website. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Judge. I'm Oscar Vickers, Web Media Designer Senior for ITD. And you know, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank everybody that provided feedback. It did help us come up with a more complete and robust website. You know, it's going to help us in the future, you know, make things a lot easier for us and provide a better user experience for the end users. With that said, one of the main focuses was making the website responsive, getting it up to modern era websites where you're able to get the same user experience across all platforms, whether it's mobile, tablet, or your computer. We achieved that and you know, we're very proud of that fact that it's, you know, the compatibility with it was enhanced. This also includes ADA compliance. We did take the opportunity to enhance certain elements within the framework to improve that. And in the end, our goal is to provide a, you know, an easier user experience and make it seamless for the end users. You know, we're very confident we achieved that. And once again, I want to thank everybody who provided feedback. You know, we couldn't have done it without that feedback. So it helps us a lot. Thank you. Here's Alex to talk a little bit more.
Morning, Judge. Commissioners, Alejandro Rivas with the Software Division in ITD Department. I think Oscar and Rick mentioned all the features about the new website. But I just want to thank you. I would just want to thank you for all your support to accomplish this huge milestone for the county that we're providing a new website for the county in El Paso, Texas. I'd just like to add the framework we use to develop this website is more robust and this is going to allow us for future growth and make it more easy to maintain in the future as well. I just want to thank you for all your support. And again, I'm here to help you in any kind of IT technology needs you may have.
And that's what gets you those high marks. Well, I want to, I think Alex and Oscar are very modest in that really, as mentioned by Mr. Rubio, that oftentimes other communities hire a firm with 10 to 12 people working on a redesign and launch of a new website. And El Paso County is very lucky in that these two gentlemen, along with a really brilliant IT team, were able to pull this off and put out a really great product that I think is much more user-friendly. It looks fantastic. I was using it last night. And hopefully will allow for the community a better tool to engage with the work that happens here within their county government. And so thank you for all the time and the effort. I'm sure it was not an easy task, especially keeping the old website now up to date while working on the new website. So thank you for what you did. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Our next member up to speak is Mr. Pierre Andre Yuzaria. Good morning, Mr. Yuzaria.
County Commissioner and Judge, always a pleasure, gentlemen. Hey, what can I say today, right? I'm here for cannabis legalization. I'm trying to get my community, the community that I represent, up to par with the American standard of accepting people. I learned a bit about the LGBTQ community today. 69 was a big year. It was a revolutionary year. And I'm hoping 2018 could be a revolutionary year. I know it's just me, but you know, I've been monitoring as we go along, Democrats, Republicans, what's said in the news, what people really think, how people really feel about what I'm up here and verbally sharing with everyone. I'm here to say this too. Acceptance is better because right now, here in Texas, I'll use myself as a prime example. Where can I go come the weekends? There's no bars for cannabis consumers. That's why I don't go to bars. Because number one, I worked at bars for six years, six nights a week. Six years I was a bouncer at bars. So I don't really like hanging out at bars. But like in California, they're leaning towards that market. If I was in California, I don't know, Thursday night after work, I could say, you know what? Let's go to that cannabis restaurant, right? Because it's legal there. I'm not accepted, in other words. I'm not accepted because of the policies that are in place. Decriminalization still doesn't really accept me. I'm still cited. We get cited. So what is there for me? What is there left? You know, the boundaries of my own home? While alcohol consumers are free to move up and down as they please? Think about business owners. Think about the opportunity people will see. Oh wow, you know what? It's legal. Let's start a restaurant. Let's start a cafe. And in all the meanwhile, we're paying taxes as we move the product. As I grow, if I'm a grower and I sell it to a dispensary, well, they have to pay taxes and those taxes go to the government. As a business owner, once I purchase the product from the farms and I retail it, well, we get taxed again. Know what I'm saying? And so we're generating more taxes intellectually. These are intellectual taxes that the government really could use, that we really need. Based on all the changes that are going on, how do we fund these things? Cannabis is a great platform. And every time I come up here, I'm going to say that because it's a fact. I've grown up in the black market. I've seen the transition from black to gray, from gray to green. And I'm still a consumer and I want to share what I know with everyone, politicians, judges, attorneys, because there's still a lot of crazy loopholes. Like, okay, it's okay for state to state to implement their own cannabis policies, but that really doesn't help our federal government now. Because for instance, California again, or Colorado, they have legal markets. But it doesn't help, now Uncle Sam has to worry about interstate trafficking, right? Like, think about it. I mean, hey, you know what? Just go out to California and pick up some product and bring it back and start distributing it. It's easy. And then not to mention, there's a million law enforcement officers versus my 60 million, however you want to look at it. So it'd be better, it'd be smarter, wiser. Hopefully, we've learned from our past. I like to think that I have. I like moving forward. I don't like looking back. Because I used to be a hard-headed one time. I didn't know that. I didn't know one time. And I guess I was blessed with this gift, you know, by God. He says, you know what? You got to go up there and do what you got to do for your fellow citizenry. And so I'm here to share that. Again, state by state is okay. You know, Texas passes Texas, you know, legalization. Great, great. But I'm still concerned with New Mexico. I'm still concerned with Oklahoma. I'm still concerned with state by state. I have friends who I grew up with and now they're in other parts of the country where they're having hiccups and these gray areas. they're having hiccups in these gray areas. We still could use my cannabis consumption in courts here in Texas, even in California. But not until federally, not until Uncle Sam, not until Donald Trump, not until he wakes up. I mean, right up the street, Washington DC, they have a legal market. It's unconstitutional. If I had an attorney who was willing to go pro bono, we decided to build a case, I'm sure I would win. My family would win. My daughter would win. So that's what I'm here to say today. July 4th is coming up and I want us to think about that seriously. Federally, Uncle Sam talking to you. Gentlemen, it's always a pleasure. Thank you for your time. Good day. God bless us all.
Have a good afternoon, Mr. Yuzaria.
Yes, sir. You too. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Navarre, our last speaker in public comment is Mr. Steven Strummer. Hope I pronounced that correctly, Mr. Strummer.
Good morning. Please forgive my clothing. I work in a micro-farm called the Arizona Avenue Community Gardens.
No need to apologize, sir.
I noticed something before my topic. There is no Spanish translation services that I see in this court, which is a really important detail. And there's no hearing disabled translation services. What I wanted to ask you about was a statewide or county-wide historical database on buildings throughout the county. I really believe in this. The reason I believe in it is for tourism dollars. I think we could, I think it's possible to have a videography of county historical buildings for tourism dollars. Wouldn't it be awesome to do something like that to bring recognition of these buildings? Say, the Mission at Isleta, or you know, the Tegu Indians? It'd be great. It'd be a great way to bring dollars in. Thank you for listening to me. The reason I brought it in was because the historical building that was on fire, the Cray Cower Building over Friday morning. I think it's important to have a videography so that people can learn. Wouldn't it be great to have something like that so children could also learn about these buildings and see, we have the technology now. Maybe it's time. Thank you for listening to me. And I really do believe Spanish translation services are important. So much for hearing me.
Thank you so much for taking the time to be here and share your thoughts with the court. We really appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Have a great afternoon. For Navarre, that is all for public comment.
Thank you, Judge. Would you like to take the item from the consent agenda, sir?
Yes, sir.
Please. Item number 3I from the consent agenda. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the memorandum of understanding between the Department of Public Safety and El Paso County. Co-manager with the City of El Paso of the P-25 trunked regional radio system for a five-year term, authorizing the parties to share resources such as equipment and funding to achieve a unified and integrated radio communication system to improve public safety. There is no fiscal impact to the county. Contract number 2017-0727.
Holly Liddell with the County Attorney's Office. The reason I asked for this item to be pulled from consent is I feel there's some background information you should know before you make your decision. And actually, perhaps if you decide to approve the MOU today, to approve it with certain conditions. I was led to believe, this MOU is to allow DPS to basically have, they have about a half a million dollars' worth of P-25 equipment that they want to put on one of our towers. That equipment would help enhance our system and improve certain, you know, not-so-robust spots where we have a little bit of coverage problems in the system. So it would be good for us in that it would improve our coverage out there. This location is at 2100 Darrington. So we would like to do it. DPS wants to do it. They want to provide and install that equipment for free, but they also want access to the system. And from the information they've given us is access to the P-25 system. They would actually like all of their West Texas units, their subscribers, to be able to have access to that system. That could be upwards to 600 users theoretically. My concern is that the City of El Paso in the past has shown this great propensity that anytime anyone's added to the system to try to charge us for subscriber fees and maintenance fees for those users. Matter of fact, we are currently in the middle of discussions with the City of El Paso over the current maintenance bill and the portion that they wish us to pay, which is significant. And it does include subscriber fees for some non-county entities. And so I'm concerned that they would do it again with DPS. Well, it's one thing to ask us to pay for subscriber fees, maybe 30 or something, upwards to 600. That could almost double the bill that the city has been providing to us. So I have great concerns about that. So I had insisted all along that they needed to enter into an agreement with the City of El Paso that allows them access to the system and then ensures that that access is going to be free and without charge to DPS or us. I was told that that was done, so I went ahead and finalized the agreement and submitted it to the Sheriff's Office for submission to you all for approval. But out of an overabundance of caution, I asked if I could have a copy of the agreement between DPS and the City of El Paso. So I was sent a copy of the agreement. And the agreement is for another location. It is not for the 2100 Darrington location. And it does not specifically authorize DPS access to the P-25 system. So I informed DPS of that fault and said, you know, our agreement specifically calls for you to have an agreement with the City of El Paso. And this one here does not cover this location and it does not cover access to P-25. So the attorney for DPS got back with me and said, yeah, apparently there's an oversight. We're gonna negotiate a deal with the city. I don't want to slow down the process any, so I'm okay with you guys approving the MOU today. But I advise the DPS attorney that she needs to ensure that the agreement with the city specifically allows them access to the P-25 system without cost to either them or us, that it is clearly, the county has no intention of paying for DPS users to have access to the system. That half a million dollars' worth of equipment will in no way cover the cost of access to the system if the city charges us the normal standard fees. So if you choose to approve it today, I'm okay with that. But I would like you to approve it with the condition that DPS enter into an agreement with the City of El Paso and that this agreement does not become effective until that's done. And that that agreement with the City of El Paso authorizes access not only to the 2100 Darrington site for purposes of installation and maintenance, but also allows them access to the P-25 system without cost to DPS or us, the County of El Paso.
I agree completely with what you're saying. I guess the only thing I don't understand, why would we be responsible for DPS and not DPS be responsible for DPS?
That's a question that the rest of us have been asking for the last year. It seems as if, you know, the P-25 system is broken down into two kind of areas. There's an 800 system and then there's a VHF system. They both run off the same core and they both use the same towers. The City of El Paso runs the 800 system. We run the VHF system. And the reason for the difference is, in essence, I'm really kind of giving you the very, very simplistic version of it, but, because I wouldn't be able to explain the more complicated version. But it's basically that in urban areas, the 800 system will give you a more robust system, but it geographically does not cover as big of an area.
Right.
So for bigger counties or bigger areas, the VHF is preferable, but for urban cities, the 800. Well, most of these other entities, El Paso is the only city that uses the 800 system. Everybody else uses the VHF. So when they get on the system, they get on the VHF side. And so the City of El Paso decides that since it's on the VHF side, we're responsible for the fees. We disagree and we are currently, you know, meeting with them to try to work this out amicably. But I'm concerned that adding 600 users to the dispute is going to really, you know, kind of blow this. Which is why I'm really insistent on this one, that $500,000 worth of equipment is not worth 600 users' worth of fight. And so that's why if you approve it today, because we don't really want to slow down the process. I mean, you know, this equipment is aging by the day. It's not helping us to have it sit somewhere in a closet. So we would like this equipment to be installed, but we don't want it installed until DPS has their agreement in place with the city that assures us that we're not gonna be in a dispute with them over the subscriber fees and the maintenance fees.
I agree. I'm making the motion with those contingencies and desperately urge us to fix that contract with the city.
Commissioner Leon has a few questions.
Holly, I just have a couple of questions. Insofar as data storage, does that also impact what we pay for that storage?
Well, the P-25 system doesn't have any data storage component. What was the thing that we just did? The evidence.com thing where we're using the body cams has a data storage. But there's no data storage for the P-25 system. Now, I mean, 911, obviously, and we, all of the dispatch people do store their own data, but that's not part of the contract. We have our own separate equipment. Is that right, Deputy? Right? We've got our own equipment that stores our dispatch calls. The city has their own equipment that stores their dispatch calls. And then 911 has their equipment that stores their calls. So the P-25 system and the charges and the maintenance, that has nothing to do, that's not part of my concern and that would not be part of this agreement. This agreement really is only to improve the coverage area. It has nothing to do with storage.
Okay, thank you. Second.
Any other questions or conversation, Commissioners? Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye. And if you guys want more robust conversations about P-25 radios, feel free to go to a Council of Governments meeting. We do it a lot.
Judge Vogt. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Liddell.
Item number six presentations. Item 6A, receive a presentation by the El Paso Veterans and Writers Association to the members of Commissioners Court in recognition of the county's continued support to the community's veteran population.
Good morning, Mr. Mond.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, gentlemen. Good morning. I'm Daromond. I am the President of the El Paso Veterans and Writers Association. I am joined with Ms. Lucy Nahara, who's newest member of our Board of Directors. I come today to say thank you to the entire Commissioners Court. Your support of the veterans has been phenomenal. Currently, right now, we're in the middle of our fifth annual food drive with Commissioner Hagerty helping me. Commissioner Leon has done his blanket strides and everything that's helped us. Commissioner Stout's been out there with the Northeast veterans, helping them and getting stuff done. Commissioner Perez out there in San Elie. Every parade, you're out there. We appreciate it. Judge, you're new to all this, but you put up with me. So in a way, I think you deserve recognition. So, no, sorry, that's bad. It's been five years. And we want to say thank you. During the five years, we've had Damesford dogs running around, puppies running all over the county courthouse. You guys have rolled up your sleeves, came up with some great ideas and supported veterans. It's being noticed. We've been receiving calls from all the state of Texas, even up in Washington, about how do we work together? How does the county of the VRI achieve what we achieve? And it's getting national recognition. You guys have always been there for us. And I cannot say how indebted I am to you on behalf of our veterans. Your support of the veterans community is unmatched. I cannot find any local government agency that does as much for their veterans as you all do. And for that, you all should be commended. And I would like to do that today. We ordered state of Texas flags for each of you, just a small way of saying thank you for all you do. And I'd like to read and present it. The state of Texas House of Representatives, this certifies that the Texas flag here with, presented to County Judge Ruben John Vogt, Commissioner Andrew Hagerty, Commissioner Carlos Leon, Commissioner David Stout, and Commissioner Vince Perez. We're going alphabetically. I'm not picking on anybody, so. By the El Paso Veterans and Writers Association, EPVRI, and the Texas House of Representatives, was flown at the Capitol of the sovereign state of Texas, April 17, 2018, in appreciation of supporting El Paso veterans and their families. It went as served and pursuant to the authority vested in me, I have here unto set my hand and seal of office at Austin, Texas, this 18th day of April, 2018, attest Sergeant of Arms, Texas House of Representatives. What are we saying? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mond.
If you would all, we would like to present them to you. We'd like to take pictures, yeah. Sorry. Thank you all very much. On behalf of El Paso veterans, their families, our wounded warriors, our future veterans, Fort Bliss, which all do is phenomenal, and we really, really do appreciate it.
Thank you. And you're thanking us, but really the thanks should go to you for all the work that you and your organization is doing for our community. I think a lot of what we do is in partnership with you. And so thank you for keeping us involved and engaged as we should be. Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item number 6B. Receive a presentation from the El Paso County Historical Commission regarding their first quarterly report. The Economic Development Department has requested that this item be postponed for one week. They moved?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, board appointments. Approve the reappointment of Commissioner David Stout's appointee, Jose Valderrama, to the El Paso County Housing Authority Board for the term beginning May 15, 2018, through May 14, 2020.
Just want to ask for the reappointment of Mr. Valderrama. He's actually, I don't know why it works out this way, but my appointee has to be somebody who lives within the community, who lives within the housing, within the housing community over there. And so he's been an active member for me over the last couple of years. He wants to be reappointed and so we'd like to have him reappointed. So I'd go ahead and make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight. Approve the reappointment of County Judge Ruben Vogt's appointee, Myra Kelly, to the County of El Paso Risk Pool Board for the term beginning May 18, 2018, through May 17, 2020.
Commissioners, Ms. Myra Kelly has served on our Risk Pool Board now for several years. She was first appointed by former Judge Escobar twice, actually. And she has asked to be reappointed again. And as all of you know, you need to have a strong background when it comes to your employees and benefits to serve on our Risk Pool Board. And Ms. Kelly definitely brings that to the board. She's worked for El Paso Electric as a benefits manager for the last eight years. And prior to that, worked for the University Health System County Hospital out of San Antonio for four years. She has a Bachelor's of Arts in Business Management from the University of the Incarnate Word out of San Antonio. And I think she would be a fantastic person to... Word out of San Antonio, and I think she would be a fantastic person to keep on the Risk Pool Board, so I'm asking for your approval today.
Is there a motion?
I will ask for someone to make the motion, please.
Oh, move.
I'll second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Navas, before we take item nine, we have Judge Maria Salas Mendoza here, and I believe Judge Strathman was here as well, and so, if it's okay with HR, if we could take up item 12 and 13?
Item number 12, approve and authorize employee and non-employee parking rates, eligibility for employee parking rates, and reimbursement for parking access card deposits. Funding is available in general fund dues to parking deposit refundable and general fund dues to AMPCO deposit refundable for reimbursement of access card deposits. Item number 13, approve the employee or authorized individual monthly parking application license agreement and the monthly parking application lease agreement for non-county employees who utilize the county monthly parking garage or MDR parking lot. Contract number 2018-0135 and 2018-0212. Morning.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, my name is Sam Thoreau, I'm the Deputy Human Resources Officer for the County of El Paso. I'm here to talk to you about parking today. I do have a presentation, but basically, the purpose of today's agenda item is to obtain Commissioners' Court authorization for the, for an increase to the parking rates at the county's MDR parking lot. It is to determine the eligibility for employee parking rate. It's to authorize the reimbursement of access card deposits and to establish an application license agreement which outlines individuals' rights and responsibilities for using the county monthly parking garage. So, to start, I want to remind the court of a couple of meetings and things that had taken place before today. On January 1st, 2018, the Human Resources Department began the administration of parking for employees at the MDR parking lot, the monthly parking garage, and the day-use parking garage across the street. As part of that transition, there were new policies and internal procedures that were developed, including moving every employee participating in the parking to a payroll deduction system, which benefited both the county and the employees that were paying for those transactions. On May 3rd of this year, staff gave an update to the Commissioners' Court on the parking operations, and we discussed a variety of options for moving this process forward. Those, those options included employee parking rates, access card deposits, new parking application and license agreements, new disabled parking spaces on the fourth floor, employee health clinic parking validation potential, and inter-local agreements and with other government entities potential. The reason I say potential is because those are, those items are still being vetted by both our department and the Facilities Department, and we're still in discussions with other government, government entities. Today, what I'd like to focus in on is parking rates eligibility, access card deposits, and the parking application license agreement. During our May 3rd presentation, we had informed the court that we would be vetting these items more thoroughly and then bringing them back to the court individually for action MDR parking lot, so the first area I'd like to discuss is this parking lot, which is located at 801 East Overland Avenue, across from the MDR building. This parking lot has 124 spaces, four of those are assigned to disabled parking spaces, 17 are available for the public for day-use parking, 45 are for non-county employee monthly parking. We have 10 specifically assigned for county marked vehicles, and we have 50 that are assigned to county employees that are doing monthly parking. We currently have a waiting list of 42. As you, if you count those numbers up, it's going to come up to 126. We are overselling this as we are implementing the same ratio that we're doing with the garage where we can sell more parking spaces, because not every one of them is going to be used at every given time. Okay, this chart is what's showing our current parking rates and what our proposed parking rates are. The county currently operates under a contract with Parking Systems of America for the management of the MDR parking lot. This is the MDR parking lot, only they do not manage the day-use garage or the monthly parking garage. The county, through this agreement, the county receives 85.5% of the gross revenue each month for parking. Based on the discussion with the Commissioners' Court on this property, staff is working toward making this an employee monthly parking lot with controlled access and parking access cards. So, hopefully, here in the future, we've been, we're going to be able to establish the eight entries, similar to how we do at the monthly parking garage, so employees using their access card can get into that location. We're not there yet. Once we do reach that point, we do believe we will no longer need the private vendor managing this parking lot, and we have been in discussions with the private vendor, telling them what our future plans are, and our belief that we could eliminate this contract and do that in-house. However, in the meantime, what we're trying to do is phase out the, the parking to be used, I mean, phase in the parking to be used for employee-only monthly parking. It's going to take us some time to do that. We have seen an increase in the monthly parking from 5 to 50, and last week, we increased that an additional 20 more, so we only have 22 people right now on our, on our waiting list, and we're continuing to phase them in to the parking lot. However, as part of this transition, and due to the parking demand, we believe an increase in the parking rates for non-county employees is going to be warranted, and I've highlighted those in green. It is our recommendation to raise the day-use parking rate from $4 to $5, and the monthly parking rate from $65 to $80, and make that effective on July 1 of this year. Now, with this rate change, we are expecting to experience a revenue decrease based on adding the 42 employees that are on our waiting list, which will be paying at a lower rate than what is currently being charged. And then, we expect an increase in revenue based on the private entities that are currently using the parking lot. However, we believe the offset between those two things is going to be as far as the income that the county is receiving. As far as the employee rates at the downtown garages, both the day-use and the monthly garage, we are not recommending any changes at this time. However, we do want to let the court know that we are actively working on a system to where we would not have any charges for county employees parking downtown, and our target date is for fiscal year 2020. So, we've actually, we've been able to move that up a little bit, and we do think we can make that a reality if the court chooses to do that. Now, as far as eligibility is concerned, the county currently charges employees $30 per month for parking, and there has been some discussion about expanding the eligibility for the employee rate to include district judges. If the court, if it is the court's desire to expand the eligibility, then staff would recommend that we add additional language to define the eligibility for employee parking rate, and I put that there in the, under eligibility. The first one, county employees parking rates apply to county employees, that's what the procedure that exists currently. We could change that to where it be county employees parking rate apply to county employees and individuals receiving county pay supplements or stipends. Underneath that, you'll see that there's currently four entities right now that are receiving the pay supplements or stipends, three from Texas AgriLife. Those three are not currently parking at, at the garage, but with this language, they would be eligible for the parking rate.
I'll make, I have a question real quick, Sam. Are they based out of here, or are they based out of the annex?
They're based out of the, the annex.
So, they have no reason to want a parking place?
They would have no reason, but they would be eligible. And so, the way we're looking at this to make sure is, if we put this language, who is eligible, just in case they do get an office over here?
And I think, I think it's important to make sure we put that they have to have an office at the county courthouse to be eligible. It makes no sense for someone, I mean, that, that's, at least, that's my thought on this policy, because there's no reason for you to be parking here every day if you work at the annex, so.
As we've, as we've dug into this a little bit more, there are multiple agencies or county employees around the county that are stationed at locations elsewhere that do come down to the county on a regular basis, that we do foresee them, especially if it's free in the future, wanting to use in the parking garage while they're coming to meetings and things like that. But it is an issue that we're, we're looking at, and that's why we put the numbers here, so we can identify who would actually be eligible, not necessarily who's using it. We have three Court of Appeals judges that do receive a stipend from the county. Currently, those individuals are paying $80 per month, but with this language, that would allow them to receive the $30 rate. We have District Attorney that is not parking at the county garage right now, but would be eligible to park there at the $30 rate, and then we have 17 district judges who are currently parking at the, at the garages right now, and they're currently paying a $30 rate with it, which is one of the issues that we're trying to resolve today, so we know whether to charge $30 or $30 forward. Now, so again, of the 24, 20 of them are currently using the downtown parking garages. Now, if the court does choose to allow these individuals to receive the employee parking rate, staff is recommending that we also add language that would require payroll deduction, which is a requirement that we place on employees that are currently receiving this discounted rate. One thing that we were trying to do when we transitioned the operation was to get away from taking cash payments from county employees on a monthly basis and switch that over to the payroll deduction. Like I said already, that had a significant benefit to both the employee and to the county based on the pre-tax. Now, since the district judges are currently paying the employee rate, adding them to the eligibility would not impact the budget, and 15 of the 17 of the judges are currently doing the, are currently paying through payroll deduction right now. It would not impact the employee waiting list as the, currently, the district judges are using the first floor, which is a restricted area to department heads and elected officials, so this would not have an impact either way as far as the waiting list. Now, adding the language would make seven more people eligible for the parking rate, but like I said, only three of those, other than the district judges, are currently using the garage, and they are paying the $80 rate. If the court chooses not to expand the eligibility, then we could expect an increase of about $850 per month, about $10,200 annually, if the number and type of parkers remain the same on what exists today. We also have 683 employees that are, that have paid a $10 deposit prior to the development of employee parking policy, which our policy no longer requires than to pay that $10 deposit. But in order for us to reimburse those employees, we need Commissioners' Court action, and this is the purpose of this slide. I'd like to reimburse those employees. Now, the application license agreement, that is the second agenda item that we have on this topic, what this is, is basically, this is an effort to insist, assist us in enforcement of the parking policies that were established by the Commissioners' Court in December. In order to do that, we have developed a parking application and license agreement for both county and non-county individuals. These agreements serve as a contract between the county and the individuals and outline the parking responsibilities and requirements for everybody using our facilities. So, action-like items that we would need, depending on what the court, the direction when the court wants to go, is the first one is to approve and authorize the MDR and downtown parking rates that we had shown, with the MDR parking rate change for non-employee day use from $4 to $5, and monthly, monthly use from $65 to $80. Second action item we would need is to approve and authorize employee parking rates to apply to county employees and individuals receiving county pay supplement or stipend, with the caveat of payroll deduction mandatory in order to receive the employee parking rate. Third item, approve and authorize the reimbursement of the $10 access card deposit paid prior to the adoption of the new parking policy, and then the fourth action item is to approve and authorize the application and license agreements, which outlines individuals' responsibilities while using the county parking facilities. So, I tried to keep that short and sweet. I know I had presented a pretty lengthy discussion in, on the May 3rd Commissioners' Court meeting, but from that meeting, these are the items that we took away and are bringing back to the court for action items.
Really quickly, Commissioner Hagerty, Mr. Navas, have we read item 13 into the record?
Yes, sir. Item 13 has been read.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Hagerty?
Absolutely agree with one, there's no reason for us not to charge the same rates everywhere on that. Agree with number two, I still am insanely frustrated that employees of the county have to pay to park at work, especially since there are offices outside of this building where they get to park for free, so in essence, you get paid more to not work in this building than if you do, so I definitely agree with number two as well. Number three, that makes absolute and total sense, and same with number four. So, I, I think the fact that the, the district court judges and appellate court judges are, yes, the majority of their pay is paid for by the state, but there's still a portion paid for by the county, and all of their staff are paid for the county, and a single name out, I don't think is fair or right, so I agree with all of them. I'm not going to make the motion yet, because I assume some people may have something else they want to say, but those are my thoughts on all four of those issues.
Judge Salas Mendoza, would you like to speak on any of these?
I made that mistake the last time you and I were in a meeting, so.
Appreciate that. Maria Salas Mendoza, I'm the judge of the 120th District Court. I'm also here as the administrative district judge. Thank you all for hearing from me. It's not usual that I would have the time to sit here, and, but it's always interesting to see you all at work. I wanted to add that, you know, after listening to it all, it still does seem that we're the only ones that really it affects. The Court of Appeals judges have included it in their budget from the state, so they are, whatever the rate is, it's going to be paid for them. And that was our instinctive reaction. I, I want to take this opportunity to thank Sam and Melissa for meeting with us. There was a number of district judges at the meeting with them, and they really went through in detail how this came to be, and I have to say, tell you that it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, and I have to express gratitude really for all the work they've done, and they really explained to us, not just how they came down to these four items they're looking at, but all the misuse of this excellent resource that you all offer to members of the public, the judges, and employees, and, and not only have they done a lot of work, but then, we understood. It does really seem to only affect the district judges, but that was not the goal, as we kind of felt like, why are you picking on us, as we often feel? But I really do understand all the work that they did and why the considerations are that they are. This is not the only benefit where you have to delineate what you're providing to county employees versus non-county employees, and that was definitely clear, and we understood that. We appreciate the consideration, as I mentioned in that meeting to them. While we are, we cannot argue that we're county employees, we are no different than the county court judges in terms of the work that we do here, and that we really feel like we have tried hard to work with some of the county measures that have been implemented that have really improved our performance, I feel. But bottom line, it is, it's a nice benefit, and for me, it's a security issue. You know, it's important for us to be able to access the building. There are some issues there, and we're, we're going to come back to you, and that's some work we've been doing with a lot of members of the county community in terms of some security issues in the building, and there's some concerns in the parking lot, but it is better than anything that's going to be offered to us. We work here, we're going to have to figure out where we park, and so, we appreciate the consideration. We'd like to continue parking there, and obviously, we would appreciate the consideration to play that, that lower rate. Do you have any questions for me?
Judge, thank you for being here this morning. I know that yours, and I know Judge Strathman was here for a while. I agree with everything Commissioner Hagerty had to say, and I'd like to make the motion insofar as, Christina, let me know if I've done it correctly, item 12, item 13, to include the action items which were delineated, such as one, two, three, and four.
Second.
That's fine.
Is there any other discussion or comments from Commissioners? Is there any other discussion or comments from Commissioners? Okay. Let's to approve item number twelve and thirteen.
Ms. Caesar? Sam, can you bring it back to that language that says, that shows the?
I have it on my screen.
The employee parking rates, no, the one that says the or right there, and that it would be the second option, county employee parking rates applied to county employees and individuals receiving pay supplements or stipends.
That's what the action item said.
That is what you're saying, but I just wanted it clear on the record, yes, sir.
With option two.
Right, yeah.
But option two is one of those action items.
I'm just worried, clarification's always important.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your work on this. Thank you for being here, Judge.
This'll be funny.
Would you like to go back to the regular order, Judge, or? Item number nine, Commissioners' Court. Receive a presentation regarding the sale, use, and possession of fireworks for the 2018 Fourth of July holiday.
Good morning, Commissioners. It is that time of the year again when we begin to discuss fireworks. The year is flying by. I wanted to have this opportunity to just brief the court on where we are with the weather and the Keach Byram Drought Index and receive any feedback that the court might have in regards to fireworks. I will mention, before we start the presentation, that about three or four weeks ago, we had a meeting with the Office of Emergency Management. They coordinated the meeting along with both of our ESDs, the City of El Paso's Fire Department, the Sheriff's Office, and several other individuals, the Adult Probation Department, to begin thinking and planning far in advance of any decision that's made on fireworks. At that point, we did not know whether or not we would have a ban or be able to ban sticks and fins, leading up to the deadline that we have of June fifteenth for that decision. But either way, wanted to let you know that we have been working very diligently to prepare for the July Fourth. Because it is a time that has caused concern for us, given the thousands of people that flock to one area of the county at Montana Vista and create really a safety hazard for the residents in that area. And so we have been doing as much as we can to plan in advance. So the court may recall that we have a couple of areas of decision points when it comes to fireworks. One, we can do nothing. The sale of fireworks then runs and starts on June twenty-fourth through midnight on July fourth. We do have the authority to restrict sticks and fins, which are referred to as restricted fireworks, and we have to make a decision to ban sticks and fins by June fifteenth, which is this Friday, I believe. And in order to be able to take action to ban restricted fireworks, we have to meet five seventy-five on the Keech Byram Drought Index. I'll get into those numbers in just a little bit, but we have not met that number as of yet, and I don't anticipate that we will meet that number by Friday. It is very close, but I don't know that we will meet it. Third, in the past, between 2011 and 2015, county judges have the ability to issue a declaration of local disaster. And as part of that declaration, if you're issuing it in regards to fireworks, it halts the sale, use, and possession of fireworks for, I believe, sixty hours. We then have to send the information to the governor. He receives a report and an outlook on the weather situation and the drought situation, and he determines whether or not he extends that beyond the sixty hours. It's then kicked back to the Commissioners' Court to basically approve what the governor has provided us. Again, we've used that between 2011 and 2015 when we were at the five seventy-five, and that was a time when the state was seeing a significant drought. You may recall that in the last two years, 2016 and 2017, we did not meet that five seventy-five, and we were not able to take action to ban restricted fireworks or issue the disaster declaration. And now getting into the numbers, these were updated yesterday. And I'll start by saying that when we have banned fireworks, El Paso has had either the first or the second highest KDBI in the state. As of yesterday, the top five counties are listed there. El Paso is, was at four fifty-one again yesterday and ranked fifty-ninth when it comes to the KDBI. I believe that we, there were thirty-nine other counties, or twenty-nine other counties, somewhere in that area, that actually met the five seventy-five and exceeded it. We have not met it yet, and we are not even ranked one or two as we were in the past. So we've dropped significantly. This is a little, there's a lot going on on this slide, but I wanted to give the court just some context. This is where we have fallen on the last day of every month from January through June. And what we did is for the June point, we took June tenth for every year. You'll see in red, that third bar toward the bottom is 2018. And between 2011 and 2015, when we did ban fireworks, you can see those are all above that red bar across the top there. That signifies the five seventy-five. The last two years in green and yellow, where we were on June tenth, where we were not, excuse me, not able to take any action. We're at five forty-one today. We have been increasing, it's in flux. Some days, we increase by five points, other days by four, other days by three. And so it's hard to determine when we might get to that five seventy-five. There is some rain expected over the coming weekend and into next week. Slight chance, it depends on the day, twenty percent, thirty percent, ten percent. We have seen that when it has rained, these last two rain events, the KDBI has dropped by ten points or twelve points. And so it's hard to say when we might reach that five seventy-five, and if we do reach it, if it'll drop if we do see rain. And so we're in this weird kind of gray area right now. This is the forecast for fire danger put out by the Texas Forest Service. Again, I pulled this yesterday, and it's updated daily. Right now, we're at a moderate fire danger range. And we also pulled this from the U.S. Drought Monitor, which evaluates drought and something that we have looked at year to year to see where we are. This is updated monthly. And right now, it indicates that we're abnormally dry, which is somewhat typical for the area. Last year, we were in white with no drought. We have gone all the way up to extreme drought in the past. And so although we were in a severe drought between 2011 and 2015, things have kind of subsided, but we're starting to see an uptick. And I have no doubt that in the coming years, the weather situation will probably get to where it was between 2011 and 2015. And so that's where we are today, Commissioners. Clearly, this item is not posted for action in that by June fifteenth, I don't think we're going to reach that five seventy-five, and so we can't ban restricted fireworks. I'd like to hear any feedback that the Commissioners have in issuing a potential disaster declaration. My concern there is that in the past, when we were ranked first or second on that KDBI, even if we were right just above five seventy-five, we had a strong case for issuing an emergency, which is basically what that is to some extent. Now that we're ranked
Fifty-ninth.
Fifty-ninth in the state with several other counties already exceeding the five seventy-five or meeting it. We did call the top five counties and asked if they were going to be taking any action. Some of them didn't even know that they could. I think one was planning on banning restricted fireworks, but not issuing a complete ban on the sale. And so, you know, I think we're hard pressed to be able to make a case for issuing the disaster declaration. Not making any announcement or determination now, just really wanted to provide the court the data and the information and receive any feedback that you may have. Commissioner Hagerty?
I don't know why, but I always seem to talk first. I agree. I think especially if the fifty-five, fifty-eight, fifty-seven counties above us don't declare an emergency, it's going to look really weird if we do. And I don't see the governor saying, you're in an emergency if all the other counties who are above you aren't.
The other thing is, you know, we could wait to have that number get to five seventy-five, and let's say we hit it on Friday or Saturday, and then we have rain and it drops. And we keep going into this back and forth, and you know, if we were twenty points or ten points even above the five seventy-five and we had some rain and it dropped, I would say, well, we'd still at least meet that five seventy-five threshold. But here, we're teeter tottering on, will we hit it? When will we hit it? If we hit it, will it rain and drop? And if it drops and we've issued the declaration that it's null and void, then I assume that we can't take any action. I'm not sure that would be something we'd have to talk to with legal, but, you know, this is always a very tough decision because we do see the hardship that is placed on the residents in Montana Vista when all of folks that live in the county, in the city, where fireworks are banned and their homes are protected, flock to one neighborhood, and they have challenges to get out. Emergency personnel has witnessed significant challenges. It comes at a cost to the county to have overtime for our sheriff's department, and we've even called in folks from the state to come in and help patrol. And so this has been a decision that we take very seriously, but wanted to nonetheless, at the very least, provide the court with the information that we had and gain any feedback that you may have. I don't know if anybody has any other comments. Commissioner?
The other counties, I guess, do meet the threshold. Were they, contact them and see if they were actually declaring a disaster or?
We contacted the top five and asked them. Some weren't aware of their ability to take action. One was planning, I believe, to ban the restricted fireworks, but not to have a full ban.
But they're in the high sixties, or six hundreds.
Well, and not all of those counties above us have met the five seventy-five. We just ranked fifty-ninth, I believe, and I have it in my notes, but I believe there were twenty-nine or thirty counties that did meet the five seventy-five or exceed it. And so we didn't call all of those, the counties, just the top five. And I may continue to do some more work over today and tomorrow to reach out to, I did reach out to the Texas Forest Service to ask about some of the work they do in advance of sending the governor any recommendation when a declaration is issued. I believe we might be one of the only counties that has ever done that. I don't know if others have or not, but I know we've used our authority to be able to do so. And they indicated they weren't the ones that prepared the information, so I think it probably goes through the State Office of Emergency Management, and they work with different entities to piece that information together and then ship it off to the governor. And so I'll reach out to them just to close that loop and get any feedback that they have. Just wanted to share this with everyone.
I mean, I just want to point out, Judge, Commissioners, I mean, it's still very, I think there's various dangerous conditions out there. I mean, just because we don't meet the threshold doesn't mean that we're facing extremely dry conditions. You know, our neighbors to the north out in Ruidoso, Cloudcroft area, you know, there was a forest fire recently, just over the past couple of days. Up further northeast of Santa Fe, there's another major forest fire. Up in Colorado, there's forest fires. So I mean, I don't, this is some of the driest conditions that I think we've seen, at least in my time here on the court, and it's a little baffling that we're not at the threshold yet. But, you know, it's if the court is unable to take action, I think it's important for the public just to be aware that just because we don't meet the threshold doesn't mean that there aren't very dangerous conditions that currently exist. And I think that's an important message that we have to send. It is very dry, and it does create very dangerous circumstances for our residents out there.
And I appreciate that, Commissioner. What was on today's consent agenda, if you saw it, was also to extend our burn ban, which we've been doing since 2011. And that was an effort to continue to ensure that, one, we didn't have individuals burning unnecessarily, which trash, and other items, but also to keep the community safe. It's the only tool that the county has to try to keep folks from burning, and then that gets out of control, and we've seen in the past that, you know, tires catch on fire, pallets catch on fire, homes have caught on fire. And so we do live in the desert, but we are experiencing drought-like conditions, and it is dry out there, and we don't want what we saw in Ruidoso just a few days ago happen here in El Paso. And so I don't know if there are any other comments from the court. Unfortunately, again, we're tied to meeting that five seventy-five threshold to take any action. We have not met it yet. We will send out a press release once a decision is made, but wanted to, at the very least, give the court the information that we had. So thank you for the time.
Brings us to item ten, Human Resources. Postponed June fourth, 2018. Approve and authorize the revision of the County of El Paso's vacation leave policy.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Melissa Carrillo with Human Resources. This morning, I have two more policies for your consideration. And just to remind you all, bringing policies to your attention for constant revision helps to ensure that we are keeping the county updated with best practices. And so this morning, I have the pleasure of bringing you an update to our vacation policy as well as our reemployment policy. And again, I want to thank everyone who's provided input, department heads and elected officials, as we continue to keep our policies up to date. Specifically with vacation policy, there are a few things we'd like to mention that have changed. One, really most consistently, is clarification on verbiage throughout the policy to make sure that it's much clearer to both the employee and the administrators on this side. We did add something with our vacation policy to ensure continuous service was added. This is important because in years prior, we had employees who would be rehired with the county questioning what accrual rates they would be reinstated upon. And so by inserting that word, it will help to ensure those who are on a continuous pattern will accrue at the rate set by this policy. We did also clarify that department requests for vacation should fall into compliance with department procedures. Every department has their own procedures on how they solicit vacation requests, and we encourage our departments to make sure their department procedures are consistent and clear for employees to understand what they need to do when they are requesting vacation. This policy also was edited to ensure that it explained what happens when employees transfer from one department to another. There have been issues in the past where there was some concern with, are those vacation requests still approved when you transfer to another department? And we wanted to clarify that language here. And finally, we clarified what happens when employees transfer from a full-time to a part-time status? What happens with their accrual rates? And so this policy was updated to ensure that was clarified and making it an easier read again for the employees to understand as well for the administrators. Those are the changes regarding vacation policy.
Commissioners, any questions? I believe we've spoken about this previously. Motion to approve. Second? Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eleven. Approve and authorize the revision to the County of El Paso's reemployment policy.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Melissa Carrillo for the record. This reemployment policy has been in effect for some time, but we wanted to ensure that we made it consistent with other policies that reflect time periods governing reemployment, reinstatement, especially when it concerns RIF employees. And so there's clarification on verbiage throughout this policy as well, but there was specific mention on converting the reinstatement period to six months versus one year. And that's important because we have other policies that consider reinstatement at the six-month period. We wanted to ensure that even employees who are re-employed, regardless of a RIF or not, also are applicable based on that six-month period. And that's important because it governs the third update that's significant within this policy, which ties to the types of benefits and accrual rates they're entitled to once re-employed. And so it specifies if employees are rehired within a six-month period and the department so chooses, they are able to accrue at the rates they had when they left. However, if it's past that six-month period and they retain employment or reemploy with us, then those rates change and they start all over again. But it does clarify that in the policy so that employees really understand what happens with reemployment.
Melissa, that also includes employees that are ordered back for reemployment by a court?
So we have a reinstatement policy, which is different from the reemployment policy. Reemployment is usually used for those employees who've left us for voluntary reasons and choose to come back. Then we have a separate reinstatement policy, which is not up for discussion today, and that talks about what happens when employees are RIFed, are reduced, and then they're ordered back, whether it be because the vacancies have now become available. And so those are two separate policies. But Commissioner, to answer your question, when a court orders it back or when a civil service commission orders reemployment of an employee, neither of these policies truly kick in if the order governs that they should have been employed as though they never left. And so if we have a court order document or a civil service document saying to do that, none of these policies really apply. We reinstate them as though they never left. Benefits, accrual rates, every other thing as well, every other benefit as well. Yes, sir.
Second? Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good afternoon. Motion carries.
Thank you all. Have a good afternoon.
You too.
Item number 14, Public Works. Postponed June 4, 2018. Approve and authorize the Public Works Parks and Recreation Department to charge an event fee of $25 for the golf course to offer the community an opportunity to participate in special golf-related events. The Public Works Department has requested this item be deleted. Please have a motion.
A move.
Second? Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stow.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, I believe we have one member of the public here to speak on item 17, and so we could take that item first under purchasing.
Here. Item number 17, Purchasing. Award of bid number 18025, 2018 paving project for the County of El Paso to Jar Concrete Incorporated, doing business as Jar Construction Incorporated of El Paso, Texas, in the amount of $2,295,500. Purchasing approved recommendation on May 31, 2018. Funds are available.
Were you here for this item, sir?
Yes.
No? Okay. Well, we can take this item and... Yeah. Morning.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. Judge, Commissioners, this would be the award of the paving project for the 2018 Public Works. As part of the plan, it's going to include the HMAC overlay regular and overlay recycled. This was a bid with five respondents and the, as you can see from the bid tabulation, the lowest respondent on both items was JAR Construction of El Paso, Texas, requesting approval.
And before, I also second, but one of the things, and I think Commissioner Perez brought this up a couple of weeks ago, insofar as where it reads funds are available, I thought we were going to go into, in what account?
You know, I think Betsy might have stepped out when that comment was made. We talked about it last week, as opposed to just putting funds are available, but where that would be coming from. And I apologize, Betsy, I do remember you stepping up for that, yeah.
We can identify what account these funds are in, the paving funding? Can you give it to us, please, Gabby?
Oh, in the future, no funds are available.
In the future, if they could be identified on the agenda, please.
I believe it's under special revenue, Road and Bridge Resurfacing Account.
It is. I'm looking for the actual account name, if that's what the court is requesting.
Now, do we want that to be on the item as it's read? Because it'll take a little longer.
No, what I was requesting, at least in my item, was just to clarify, I think it's just Road and Bridge Resurfacing Account should suffice. I mean, for agenda language, you don't have to read the account numbers.
Thank you.
But it helps with us for transparency purposes as well.
We will make sure the short name is on it going forward in the future. I was just so glad I didn't have to read that.
We have a motion in a second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stow.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 15. Award of bid number 18024. Purchased delivery and installation of seven Energy Star certified manufactured housing units for the Colonia Self Help Center to Clayton Homes, number 861 of El Paso, Texas, in the amount of $258,921. Purchasing approved recommendation on June 5, 2018.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. I believe we've been waiting on this one. Originally, the bid was for eight homes. One family did drop out, but after working with the granting agency and the vendor, it was determined we could go ahead with the seven homes. This will be for the mobile home project for the Colonia Self Help Center and we are requesting award to the lowest and unfortunately, the only bidder. Now, one thing that's in your background information is we did query specifically the local vendors who did not respond, and it was the Energy Star certification that kept a lot of people from responding. This was the only vendor that felt like they were able to meet that and verify it.
And I want to thank Commissioner, I think Perez, who really helped provide the idea for using this money in this capacity and not have to return it to the state or federal government. And so, thank you so much, Commissioner Ford, for the...
I want to thank Betsy and her staff. I really appreciate that we didn't have to return this, or as much funding, but we appreciate all the staff's work on that.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stow.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 16. Approve and authorize the use of the National Job Order Contract, Region 19, RFP 136973, awarded to Mirador Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $52,219.01 for the demolition of seven mobile home structures under the El Paso County Colonia Self Help Center program. Purchasing approved recommendation on June 5, 2018. Funds are available.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, approval of this contract with the Region 19 with Mirador Enterprises of El Paso, Texas, will allow us to do the prep work for the installation of the seven mobile homes you just approved. And we're requesting the allowance to use the job order contracting method through Region 19.
Approve?
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stow.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 18. Award of bid number 18026. Paving emulsion material for the County of El Paso to Holly Frontier Refining and Marketing LLC of El Paso, Texas, in the amount of $1,152,000. Purchasing approved recommendation on May 31, 2018.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. While we hate to see only one bid come in for this amount of money, we did query the other respondents. And if you notice, it was a very small list because this is a specific type of item. Most of the people that took the time to respond and tell us why they did not submit a bid basically said that they did not get contacted. While we cannot verify that, I did want to take the time to mention that we are extremely close to going out to the entire vendor database and requesting that they update their information, their commodity codes, and anything that would allow us to contact them because it bothers me greatly when I get the, "We didn't get the bid." And so I did want you to know that this is a valid bid. The response met all the minimum requirements and we're recommending award, but that we are working on that vendor database to get these aligned and get more responses. Just for the record, our average response for 2018 is five per bid or RFP, and that's more than we were in 17.
What, of the people, of the companies you contacted, all of them told you they were not?
Not all of them respond to us when we say, "Why did you not bid?" I didn't include it in this one because I think the administrative staff that was processing this didn't realize that that's our new process to include those, so you can see them. But in the future, whenever there's only one bid, you will see the query as we put it out. Though, there were about five or six, I think, that did respond and most of those were, "We didn't get it. We haven't updated our information." And then I think the third one was that they didn't get it. Those are things I can't verify. I can only show what we did send out. And I will be honest, sometimes vendors will say they didn't get something because it just makes better sense than saying, "We didn't get it returned in on time." I don't like to get into those conversations. I simply will try to do everything to plug the holes in our vendor database so that we can be sure we're using updated information. Did I answer the question right? Oh, okay.
Commissioner Perez.
Thank you. When we do get one bid in this circumstance, I mean, especially for, I guess, for this amount, is there any other additional checks that your department does to verify that we're still getting a competitive price to make sure that we're not paying? Because it means we're not in the absence of a competitive process. Is there another?
Correct. Luckily, we have one safeguard in this process, and that is, the vendor community doesn't know how many people are going to respond or not respond. If they do, that creates a whole nother can of worms that has to be taken care of legally. But in this case, this was considered a fair price based on prior history, although paving programs for purchasing aren't easily compared. The Public Works Department did feel this was a comparative and competitive price based on prior purchases of this item.
It's 27% higher than what we're currently paying, but oil prices are up.
We do have a CPI increase in any of the volatile commodities, especially petroleum products and petroleum-based items.
And I believe that this is our current supplier.
Betsy, did you say we're, this reflects a 27% increase?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Which we awarded last year?
It's still comparable. If you would like, I would love to have a conversation about CPI and provide you with some information behind the scenes, maybe in an update, on what the volatile commodities are going to be for this year and the pricing we're expected to see increases in. The petroleum and the items that are going up are going to affect some of our raw commodities that we buy.
We can certainly get a presentation of that, but I mean, this is gonna, we need to get moving with the paving season, so...
Yes, and I was just gonna give you, I think oil is running about 22.6% higher on CPI this year in the last 12 months.
Approve?
Second?
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stow.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 19. Approve the award of RFP number 18006 for professional planning services to develop a comprehensive plan update and related deliverables for the County of El Paso historic Mission Trail area to the Image Network Incorporated, doing business as Dover Coal and Partners, Coral Gables, Florida. Purchasing approved recommendation on April 6, 2018. Funds are available.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. This RFP was to secure the services of a qualified professional service consultant to help the economic development program develop the comprehensive plan for Mission Trail. We had three respondents to this and they were strong, all of them. The top two went into a second-phase scoring because we not only wanted to clarify and ask questions about the items that Jose and his group would need, but we wanted to get an idea of their presentation skills and how would they wrap it all up for Commissioners. It was determined that Image Network, who does business as Dover Coal and Partners of Coral Gable, Florida, was determined to meet our needs. We were able to also negotiate a sizable decrease in their original pricing and come in under the assigned budget, so that was a win. And we're requesting approval of this so that that contracting process can be started.
Second? I just want to say, this is a great group that has a great reputation. They developed the award-winning plan for the city of El Paso and I think they're gonna produce a great product, so I'm excited to bring these guys on.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stow.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 20. Approve and authorize the use of Buy Board Contract 50716, awarded to Galls Incorporated of Lexington, Kentucky, in the amount of $281,340 for the purchase of 31 point-blank plate carrier ballistic vests, 622 Level 3 6H plates, 20 SWAT plate carriers, 40 Level V 168H light plates, and 331 active shooter bags. Purchasing approved recommendation on May 31, 2018. Funds are available.
Sir, I think you said 31, not 311 on the first number, just to clarify.
311, I'm sorry. 311 point-blank plate carrier ballistic vests.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. This specialized protection equipment, we're requesting award through Buy Board Contract because we, there's not a lot of cooperatives out there that carry this and we need to get these items in and we want a faster response time. In this case, this Buy Board Contract is solid and we do feel the pricing is reasonable for this amount of protective gear.
Want to approve?
Second?
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stow.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 21. Approve and authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for medical, mental health, third-party administration, and cost containment services for the downtown jail and jail annex. In accordance with Local Government Code 262.030, the purchasing agent has reviewed the use of the request for proposal process.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. As this is neither high technology nor insurance, I am requesting use of the RFP process to solicit proposals for this. It is going to be the best way to determine this type of service for the county.
Want to approve?
Second?
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stow.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item number 22, Budget and Finance. Approve Amendment Number 35 to the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $124,906.50, thus increasing the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 overall operating budget of $485,640,83.62 to $485,764,990.12.
Good morning, County Judge and Commissioners. Gabby Ferro with the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. Are there any questions I can answer?
I've got one. On the first page and the second one, we're transferring $200,000 to properly categorize study allocation?
Yes, Commissioner. I inadvertently during the budget process did not, fiscal year 18, did not put the study in the correct object code, and I am correcting that at this time.
Okay. It just doesn't make sense. I was like, what does that mean? Maybe $200,000 to correctly name a study? Didn't make sense, so...
Want to approve?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stow.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to executive session. Item number 23. Commissioners' court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 23A through 23F pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087. Commissioners' court will reconvene to take official action.
Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session. We need to read a correction in to item number 23B of executive session. Item 23B should read, "Discuss the pending claim of the County of El Paso, Facilities Director Robin Sully against the City of El Paso regarding damage to a county parking garage gate caused by a police officer." That is item 23B. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 23A through 23F pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
And Mr. Navo, before we leave open, I think it should be 23D, not B, that was corrected.
I'm sorry, item number 23D. Correct, item number 23D. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action. Commissioner's Court has reconvened into regular open session. We need to read a correction in to item number 23B of executive session. Item 23B should read, "Discuss the pending claim of the County of El Paso, Facilities Director Robin Sully against the City of El Paso regarding damage to a county parking garage gate caused by a police officer." That is item 23B. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 23A through 23F pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
And Mr. Navo, before we leave open, I think it should be 23D, not B, that was corrected.
I'm sorry, item number 23D. Correct, item number 23D. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action. Commissioner's Court has reconvened into regular open session. We need to read a correction in to item number 23B of executive session. Item 23B should read, "Discuss the pending claim of the County of El Paso, Facilities Director Robin Sully against the City of El Paso regarding damage to a county parking garage gate caused by a police officer." That is item 23B. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 23A through 23F pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
And Mr. Navo, before we leave open, I think it should be 23D, not B, that was corrected.
I'm sorry, item number 23D. Correct, item number 23D. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action. Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session. Item number 24, there's a correction to read in from the County Attorney's Office. Item number 24 should read, "Authorized the County Judge to Sign a Release in Favor of the City of El Paso and its Insurer in Exchange for a Payment to the County." This is in regard to the pending claim of the County of El Paso, Facilities Director Robin Sully against the City of El Paso regarding damage to a county parking garage gate caused by a police officer. County Attorney File Number 004218PC.
Good morning again, Judge. Commissioner's Kevin McCary, Assistant County Attorney. I need a motion to authorize the County Judge to sign the release in favor of the city in exchange for payment to the county.
I move. Picket. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, have a good afternoon, Kevin.
Item number 25, "Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding a Chapter 381 Agreement with Center at Saragossa LLC and East El Paso SNF LLC, Contract Number 2018-0124."
Good morning, Commissioners. Jose Quinones with Economic Development. The Department recommends approval to approve a Chapter 381 agreement with Center at Saragossas pending the legal description that's provided for access road.
And actually, the motion would be approve and authorize the County Judge to sign a Chapter 381 agreement pending that legal description.
Picket. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I know we have some guests here from the company. I'm not sure if you'd like to say a few words or if you were just here for the...
Good morning, my name is George Lowen. I'm originally from El Paso, Texas, and it's good being home again. I live in Colorado Springs, and I've been working with the center projects, which are a rehab. It's a skilled nursing facility that has an emphasis on rehabilitation. We have with us Bob Esmas, who is the Executive Director of Operations, and I'll let him tell you a little bit about how we differ from most skilled nursing facilities. But just in brief, what was very enlightening to us is my parents passed away two years ago, and so I went through the experience. They lived here in El Paso, and I went through the experience of having them in some of the facilities, which are very nice. But it brought to light the fact that there may be a room in this community for another type of facility. And in my work with the centers, I brought it to their attention. They did some research, and what they found is that the patient-to-bed ratio was extraordinary. It was 49 to 1. And typically, they look for a ratio that's like 20 to 30 to 1. So it demonstrated to us that there was great need and demand here. What these facilities are, they're built on almost like a hotel hospitality model in that they're all private rooms, and they have a beautiful setting in the rooms. They have their own big screen TV. The patients can have their services in the room. But the main thing is that it differs from a skilled nursing facility in that it's short-term. It's maybe two weeks, maybe three weeks, rather than maybe something that could be, you know, a year or two or longer. This particular facility is going to be built, as you know, on Saragossa and Pebble Hills area. The area is really, really growing very, very quickly, as you very well know. So it's perfect for us. When we did our studies, everything said this is really a great place to be. I want to commend the County Economic Development Group working with Mr. Quinones and with Myra De La Canal has been very, very good for us because most places that we go, it's very difficult to get cooperation and get enthusiasm and then get an interchange in terms of information. They've been wonderful to work with. This will be a three-story, 80-patient-bed facility, and it's approximately, it's right under 70,000 square feet to be built on, four and a half acres. And we've had very good receptivity from not only our investors, but also from the banking community in El Paso. We'll be using a local contractor, Moss Hunt Team. So we think it's going to be a great project. We reached out to you because we needed, our main payer is Medicare, and so we needed some economic assistance because we try to provide the best services in a setting that's expensive to build. So your all's assistance to us has been greatly welcomed, so we thank you for that. Enough on my part, that's what I wanted to thank you for and certainly thank Mr. Quinones and Myra for their excellent assistance. Bob, would you mind speaking to the operations a little bit?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Bob Esmas. I'm the Director of Operations for Veritas Management or the Center at Saragossa. Currently, we have 13 facilities throughout the nation. We have eight in Colorado, we have three in Arizona, and then one in Tyler, Texas, which is fairly new. So we're very excited about maybe opening in the same building here as well. Just to add to what Mr. Lowen said, we're primarily focused on short-term rehab. So our principals, actually, one physician who used to work in a traditional skilled nursing facility, worked, and then basically, the patients were complaining because, you know, the patients that came into the building, short-term, would be mixing with the long-term care patients. So they end up leaving the facility, and so they would end up going back to the hospital instead of finishing the rehab because they didn't want to stay longer for physical therapy. So it's been pretty successful the past 10 years that we, you know, opened these buildings in all the different states. So patients, like George was saying, would stay in two weeks, they go home, followed by home health, and not a lot of them would be going back to the hospital because they get the rehab primarily in our facilities. One thing that we also want to emphasize is that we would be bringing in a lot of employment to the local city or the county or the state. So we would be hiring approximately 150 full-time nurses, physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech therapists, housekeeping, dietary, and it would really help economy locally. As a matter of fact, I was just telling Mr. Quinones here in Myra that we actually have a few nurses that live in El Paso, and they've been asking me when we're going to be opening one down here because they want to move back here because this is where their family is. So we're very excited. Thank you for your time, and we're looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate it, and congratulations. We look forward to the center opening.
Thank you.
Let us know when you're going to have that ribbon cutting.
Can you please make it to the podium just so we can have it on the record?
We are very much looking forward to the grand opening, and we would like you all, we will extend the invitation to you to come and see the facility. It'll give us an opportunity to walk you through it, and I think you'll be pleased with what you supported. And again, thank you very, very much for your support. It'll make this a possibility. Thank you.
Go ahead a little bit. I mean, if you want to look at some of our facilities, other facilities in Colorado, you can look it up. It's, all the centers are called Center at, and we have one in Colorado called the Center at Lincoln. And primarily, the setup's the same, so, you know, if you look at all that, it would be the same down here as well, so.
Good afternoon. I believe this covers our agenda. So we adjourned, Commissioners, everyone have a fantastic week. Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:09 PM.